Jennifer, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning, everyone. It is Monday, April 27th, 2020, 9:00 AM. Welcome everyone to a regular meeting of Montec County Commissioners' Court. Montec County Commissioners' Court is being provided public access and means to participate in Commissioners' Court using video conference link made available on the Montec County website at co.montech.tx.us. If you would all stand for our invocation, remain standing with the pledge of allegiance. Father, we do thank you for the time that we have together here to do the business in this county. Father, we just pray that you be with each one of us, be with the citizens of our county, the citizens of this state, the trying times that we're going in, both with business, with finances, with everything that this disease has brought to us, Father. Just pray that you be on the heart of each person, that we do the things that we are set out to do. Father, we thank you for our military, both abroad and in country. We pray for our leaders of our country, President and his staff, the state and staff of Governor Abbott and this county, Father. Just pray that you bless us. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Lee Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You can be seated. Item number four on the agenda is a consent agenda. Does anybody have anything on the consent agenda they'd like to take off for discussion? Item number three, receipt audit.
Item number three.
Item number three, public comment. Thank you, Commissioner. I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here this morning. We will back up once another comments. Is there anybody that's joined us through the video link that would have anything to bring up about any agenda item or anything in the future? We'll give just a couple of seconds here to make sure everybody gets an opportunity. We have no one that's flagged in. So now we will move on to item number four, the consent agenda. And you have nothing on the consent agenda that you will take off?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Murphy. Second, Commissioner Langford to approve the consent agenda, favor right hand. All vote in for it. Thank you. Item number five is mitigation plan update. As I mentioned in the last meeting, we will have our resolution on our next meeting. We've got it in the papers right now for the publication for public hearing. And we'll have that public hearing on the 11th. And then look at that resolution and mitigation plan, and hopefully we'll get that approved. Forwarded, I have resolutions from City of Bowie and Bowie ISD that are ready to go. And we'll just need ours, City of Oconah, and Prairie Valley. And also have St. Joe to come as well. Made contact with all of them, and lay all assurance that they'll be in probably the same week that ours is done as well. And get this moving forward, because that's all we want, to get it back to the states and get them to approve it and forward it back to the team, and we'll get this thing done. We're way ahead. Thank you all very much. Anybody have anything they want to say? Okay. Item number six, the COVID-19 operational update. As of yesterday, the numbers from yesterday tested in Montec County, and these are just tests in Montec County, we have 42 individuals that have been tested in our county. There were three of those cases still pending. We've had six positive tests, five recovered, and one fatality. And that leaves a 36 negative tests. Thirty-six of the 42 cases have tested negative. Now, the reason that these numbers don't exactly add up with what's being tested is a lot of people don't get tested in our county, and we have no idea who or how that goes about. So three of the positive cases that we've had in our county were tested outside the county. So we get those from TDAH, Department of Health. And that gives us the information that they were positive. We don't get anything negative from them. So there could have been a lot of people in our county that have been tested that tested negative that we have no idea of. And a lot of people are concerned about the number of tests that we've done or haven't done. And there's just no way, the system itself doesn't provide a way for us to know any of that. Social media keeps up with it, and there's a lot of people that put stuff on social media that we have no idea whether it's valid or it's not valid. And there's really no way to even track it down. You know, the thing about it, someone is positive, we don't even know the name. We don't get a name on it. We don't have any idea who that individual is because of the HIPAA laws. So the numbers that we get come directly from TDAH to our local health authority, and the local health authority to this office. So the numbers that we get come directly from TDAH to our local health authority, and the local health authority to this office. And then we send it out and, and flag it. And then as it's released, they'll send us the fact that it's not being monitored any longer, and we'll take it off the list. So the state, we've had, as of yesterday, two hundred and twenty-five thousand seventy-eight testings. Twenty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-four positive tests out of that, so roughly ten percent, just less than ten percent. There were two hundred and two counties involved. So out of the two hundred and fifty-four counties, two hundred and two have had positive cases, and a total of five hundred and sixty-one deaths across the state. I know that Governor Abbott today is going to lay out phase two of his re-entry program to the state to get the state moving again. This is phase two of the three-phase plan. That's going to happen today at 2:30. Now, there's a lot of people that are, that are wanting to get out and move around and do things. And I just want everybody to know that the order this court issued, and was ratified by Commissioners' Court on the 26th of March, is in support of the governor's executive orders. Those executive orders are law. You know, our orders are just in support of that, that we support what he's doing, and that our people have notification about it in the best way that we can get that done. Thing I want to be clear about is, the executive orders are law. That comes from the state. That's, that's the governor's order. The only thing that happens outside of that is a violation of that executive order. You know, I don't, I don't know what to say to any of the violations that are going on, because I got calls all weekend of people concerned about activities and stuff going on in either areas around us or within our own county. And again, those violations of executive order. Our order is merely a support of the governor. And I think it boils down to, and we're at a point now to where I don't know that there's anybody that doesn't know this going on. And it's a, it's a matter of personal responsibility and personal accountability, and that's what it's going to boil down to from here on. Even when the state opens back up completely, we're going to be into a point where everybody has to be accountable to their own actions. And consider the people around them, their families, friends, and their neighbors. Whether you have a business or whether you're just out for a walk, you're going to have to keep that in mind, to be as safe as we can be to, to support each other and to help each other get through this thing. There was also a, a piece that the governor put out Thursday, this past Thursday, excuse me, that involves the CARE Act. State of Texas has got, was a recipient of, I think, eleven point two five billion dollars that is going to be earmarked for the state. There's a lot of pieces of the pie, though, tremendous amount. So there are some training classes to be done through that, and most of the correspondence on how this is going to be doubled out is going to be through our extension office. Department of Emergency Management now is operated through Texas A&amp;M. So I think that's the reason that's done through the extension office. I've spoken with our extension agent, Justin Hansard, and he was aware of it the evening before I knew about it that morning. So there's a lot of, a lot of pieces of that pie that are not yet put together, or a puzzle rather, put together to see how this is going to be eligible. But one thing I think we do need to do is to be sure that we're tracking expenditures that are definitely related to this, this virus that's going in the, in the pieces of it. Now, I know with time, our operational time, time sheets that are going in, we're, we're tracking that right now. That's being done already. So if you have someone that is, is out for a related incident for this, then there's a line on your, your approval for that that goes to it, and we're tracking all that. The thing that I think we need to start doing, and we can go back as long as you have receipts for everything that's been spent in related, relation to this, we need to start tracking that as well. And that's just going to have to be done by each office. It'll hold on to, to what you've got, and we'll compile it. We'll maybe try to get, get a, some sort of a form put together to, so that it'll make it a little easier for you. If you want to build a spreadsheet on your own, in your office to do that with, that'd probably be the best way to do it, is build a spreadsheet for yourself. And start tracking this, and in the event that there is an opportunity for us to reclaim any of these expenses, we will already have that done. But certainly from this point forward, we need to be tracking those expenses and, and see if we can recoup any of the monies that's been done with that. Anybody have any questions, any comments? Welcome any comments from anybody. Any of the commissioners have anything they want to say about this? Okay, then we will move on to item number seven, and that is to discuss and consider the 2018-19 annual financial report. Mike Edg, with Edg Fleming and Fleming, PC, is here. If you would like to start, we've got our books here ready to go.
Awesome. Let's jump right in, Ben. The first report we're going to look at is the annual financial report. That's the larger of the down reports. As Joe said, this is the audit for the year ended September 30th, 2019. We're going to hit highlights, but if there's any questions as I go through it, just please don't hesitate to stop me, and I'll do my best to answer. Our opinion letter is on page one and two. Really, at the top of page two says our opinions. Opinions, because there's multiple financial statements here that I can, but it states that the financial statements prepared on a modified cash basis of accounting is materially correct in all, presented fairly in all material respects as of for the end of year-end in September 30th, 2019. That is a clean opinion on your financial statements, again, on a modified cash basis of accounting. On pages three through eleven is management's discussion analysis. This is, we helped the county prepare it. It's from information divided by the county dove and comparisons and things of that nature that we obtained during the audit process. It is unaudited, but it is in agreement and law found during the audit process. Pages twelve and thirteen, these are, again, on a modified cash basis of accounting, but they are, the only time you'll see these financial statements. It pulls all the different funds of the county, which you have numerous funds, and breaks them down into one column, governmental activities. It does include your capital assets, all land, buildings, equipment, net of accumulated appreciation. It also includes all non-current liabilities, debt-related items on the capital leases that the county has. So if you look at this first statement, the statement of net position, total assets, twenty-seven point eight million dollars. Liberties, only one point five, almost six million. The difference between those two is your net position, your equity, and we have a total equity of about twenty-six point two million. Of that, eleven million, almost four hundred thousand is unrestricted. Everything else is restricted for certain purposes and areas. How that number changed between the two years is on thirteen. In that position, you kind of look at the middle of the page, change in that position. We had a decrease of one billion eighty-three thousand from the prior year, bringing the beginning fund balance down to that twenty-six point two million. Now, included in that are two large things that you had this year, a little different. We have refund of the gas compressor, taxes that you collected in prior years that were, a lawsuit that was filed. Those were refunded, included in these numbers here this year. And also the county opted to pay an additional amount into the pension plan to help cover that deficit that does exist. So those two large areas helped create that deficit, all planned, all accounted for correctly. Now, we look at page fourteen and fifteen. This is your balance sheet. This is your funds that you normally see. We have the general fund, the four road and bridge FEMA accounts, and then everything else goes into the other government fund. That's your special revenue funds and debt service fund. Now, the general fund for external reporting purposes includes numerous funds within the county. It includes your general fund, Fund Ten, the indigent health, Twelve, number Twelve, group insurance, the four main operating road and bridge funds, and then Fund Seven and Seven Five as well. And again, cash basis of accounting. We'll just kind of look at the bottom page, the fund balance. That's the equity difference between assets and liabilities. And our total fund balance on the cash basis for the general fund was eleven million four hundred and one thousand dollars. And that's the unassigned part, the part that's uncommitted or unrestricted, is seven million two hundred and fourteen thousand, almost seven months of operations. The Government Finance Office Association said if you're in the sport of three- to six-month window, you're adequate fund balance, so you're actually a little above that. So even with those additional expenditures that we talked about, that was planned and expended, you're still very strong financially in your fund balance. Road and bridge FEMA monies that you see there, those are the short-term monies that you got for the smaller projects that are still being spent down little by little. We're getting there. But as of 9:30 of 2019, Road and Bridge One, Two, and Four still had some monies to spend. Three spent all their monies in that fiscal year. And then in the other governmental funds column, total equity in that goes, and there's many different funds in there. We had a fund balance of two point seven, almost eight million dollars. We slide over to pages seventeen and eighteen, looking at those same funds that we looked at on the balance sheet. This is saying the revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Again, those same funds. The general fund would slide down toward the bottom page, change in fund balance. We had a decrease of one hundred and twenty-four thousand. You see the road and bridge FEMA accounts, all deficits, because we're spending monies that we previously collected. A few larger projects are in there too, but most of it's the smaller projects. And then the other government fund had a decrease of about two hundred and eight thousand. One thing I pointed out, we talked to the county management when we were here, the interest income. I want to point out, and it's a big pat on the back for the county, you, the county added to fund balance, added to operations, interest income of almost three hundred thousand a year. Two, two or three years ago, that was less than ten thousand easy. So because of the change in the investment structure throughout for the last two or three years, that has grown to almost, now is that going to be the same over here? No, interest rates have gone down. But that's, that's outstanding. That's real money that the county can spend. And, and bank or whatever you want to do. That's outstanding. After that, there's a lot of notes, the financial statements. I don't want to get boring and cut you down on all that. There's one liability. We talked about the pension plan on page thirty-six. We do have to disclose the pension plan as it's presented to us by TC DRS. That table at the top of page thirty-six, kind of shows you the beginning liability. Now, they report it on a calendar year basis, so we're looking at December 31st, 2017, beginning liability was seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. The ending liability of December 31st, 2018 grew to about two point five million, about a one point seven million dollar increase. County has really limited control over that other than increasing contributions to the plan. The reason, the biggest reason, in my opinion, for that decrease is investment income for, for that calendar of eighteen was affordable. Cross-the-board markets were just poor. Now, from fast forward clock to 12:31, nineteen, the calendar of nineteen had great returns of investment. Plus, this excludes your large contribution you made in the fiscal year that we're auditing here today. So with those two factors, I envision that liability decreasing dramatically next year. Now, you go one more year out, it's going to be a different picture altogether, in fact, of yours. But again, those are things out of the county's control. You participate in the plan, you pay what you're supposed to pay. And you pay a little bit more from time to time when the resources are there, and that's about all you can do.
I'd like to add something, sure, not to interrupt you, just for the people that are listening. You know, and you were talking about the extra payment that we've made at the end of the year. That number right there is the reason we do that.
That's right.
We try to anticipate and, and keep up with what's going on with it, and any monies that we have extra that we can put into that, we will pool those and keep trying to keep that, that liability to as much of a minimum as we possibly can.
And I commend the county for doing that. This, this is a real liability. It really exists. It's not reported currently on your financial statements because you're on a modified cash basis, but this is real. If the county ceased operations on September 30th, 2019, that would be a liability to do. So when the resources are available, I commend the county on that. And after that, we got combining statements of support numbers that we've already talked about. I'm not going to bore you too much with that. So that's your annual financial report. Any questions before we move on? The other one I wanted to briefly go with you is the schedule of expenditure to federal awards, the other smaller down report. Because the county has received and is spending FEMA monies for many years now, and still continue as, as the, we have to report, because you expended over seven hundred and fifty thousand, we do a single audit that focuses on those, those federal programs. And in this document, we have two reports. The first one on page one and two, that goes over internal controls and compliance as it relates to those expenditures over your federal programs. Again, FEMA, that's where we're focusing, our testing. And for this year, that was your, your only federal program. We had no findings or question costs as it related to the FEMA programs this year. To the back, toward the back a little bit, on page six and seven, we have an internal control and compliance report as it relates to financial statements performed on the government-opted standards. And we had one finding this year as it relates to larger material adjustments, converting, recording things that weren't recorded or re-classifying things that weren't recorded properly during the audit. I feel with talking to both generators in the county, I think that, oh, these issues, I think, are going to be eliminated in this current year that you're operating in now. I think the county is moving forward and making some changes that will improve your financial reporting, both internally and externally. So I feel that. Hopefully, let's keep our fingers crossed that you go away this year. And then we have two other letters that are stapled. There's only one I want to go with you briefly, the one at the bottom right-hand corner called management letter. We had comments that we found that were lesser in nature that weren't in your audited report, but are things that we feel consider important enough to address to the Commissioners' Court. Prior comments, we had some outstanding checks, older outstanding checks on your bank reconciliations. You pulled treasurer's account and also in the CSCD. Now, the CSCD has already worked on taking care of these. They have been for a couple of years on working on their old outstanding account of the checks. One thing we recommend with a treasury account is work on those. They had over two hundred and fifty checks that were over one-year-old. Start working on researching, you know, that we need to, or they still do, that we need to cut the check. Replace the one that's old and outstanding, payable to the, to the vendor or the person that it's due to. Or do they need to be issued back to the state of Texas, or what? And that's what we recommend with those.
This was an ongoing problem from last year as well.
Yes, that's correct. This is a continuation. These are all, all these comments I'm going to talk about here, well, from the prior year. And I'm going to tell you kind of what's happened and not happened since then. And in that case, that still needs to happen. The state fee fund, basically the way this works, all the monies go into a agency fund that's due to the state and to the county. The, there's quarterly reports that are filed to the state, where the county remits funds to the state, but they're part of that money. There's a part, though, that stays and can be retained by the county. And as of last year, September 30th, 2018, there was a difference in that of about sixty-four thousand. At the end of September of 2019, that grew to almost eighty thousand. And we really feel that those numbers, those amounts really belong to the county and should be remitted, cleaned out, closed out, remitted to the county's general fund for operational purposes, budget purposes as well. So we recommend that be done and, and done on a regular basis, not let them accumulate, but every year, work on closing those out, remitting to the county in a timely manner. Top of page two, recording of interest income. It was just the timing, whether they weren't recorded, it's just what fund or, I mean, what period that they got reported in. And in some cases, the tax pull, the operating investment account interest were reported one month in a year or so. What we found this year is for the operating account, those were recorded in the proper month. Congratulations on that. But there are a couple of others, tax pull, that were not. Those were adjusted during the audit process, so those were taken care of in the audit. But we do recommend that those tax pull accounts and certificates of deposits be recorded in the correct account. recorded in the correct accounting period as well. Bank reconciliations and review and approval. Last year, we found that the treasury bank account and the Texas collector accounts were not, not that they weren't done, they just weren't documented, being reviewed and approved. And this year, during the audit process, we found that they're all being reviewed and approved. With the treasury account, it took a little time to get caught up with the change of treasures during the year, but they did get caught up, we looked at all those during the audit process, and those are viewed. One comment there, at the end, the competitive procurement in the prior year, we had one area that probably should have been competitively procured for the jail surveillance system, retrofit. It wasn't. This year, we found no instances of procurement issues in that area at all. And then also, congratulations, we had no current year comments. So basically, in summary, we had some comments last year, some of them resolved, we recommend some of them still being continued to look at, but nothing new to add to the list.
And that one piece that you were talking about with the tax office and the traffic office, that was basically a third-party review.
That's exactly right. The reconciliations were being done, it just wasn't a third-party review, which we recommend, those are good internal control practices, just to make sure that when they're being done, they're being done correctly and they're reviewed.
And that's been resolved.
Exactly.
All right.
And the other letters, just, I hate to say, boilerplate information required to communicate anything that we saw during the audit, and that's just a letter giving that.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Everybody understand what we've got going on? I'm very pleased with this audit, I want to thank you very much for the work that you do with it, and I want to thank the staff for the work that they've done from last year through the end of 19 to get this audit in shape and clean. Everybody's done a remarkable job. Just thank you everybody very much and continue doing what we're doing. This next year is probably going to be a little difficult, so we want to keep it as clean as we possibly can moving through this next year. The report that he gave us, I'm just typical death with. I really thank everybody for the work that was done to get us there.
I agree. I was going to say, everybody we work with within the county, you know, I mentioned the generals, but it's everybody, and everybody that we ask for information, are eager to give it, you know, very easy to work with. This year even more so, and prior years, a lot of things were done electronically, and I honestly see that as more of a trend, you know, just because, I think that's just what's going to happen. I think the world has changed.
Jennifer, did you have something you want to say?
I'm going to speak up for the other Jennifer, I said that treasure fees out of the state fees have been transferred.
Awesome. Congratulations on that.
There is, she and we've put steps in place to do that.
Great.
I thought that had been done, but I wouldn't share, so I'm going to say anything about it.
That's great, that's great. So that's another one that we leave.
It's already resolved.
Exactly.
Okay. Motion to accept financial report. Concerned with that, in form of a motion to accept financial report for 2018, 2019.
Selective.
And a motion from Commissioner Murphy and a second Commissioner Langford to accept the audit from Edge Department Fleming and Fleming. Any more questions, any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, right hand, all voted for. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much.
Our pleasure, and hope everybody stays safe and continue the course.
Thank you. We will, we will from here.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Item number eight on the agenda is to discuss and consider a change or cancel of the May 25th, 2020 meeting, commissioners' court meeting, due to the holiday, take any necessary action. Just counting the days from the court meeting prior to that and the one after, I would recommend this moving the day after.
Tuesday.
To the Tuesday, that would allow more time for billing and so forth to get done and a closer number of days between the court meetings. They'll be really short if we go a day before, Friday before.
Motion to move the May 25th meeting to May 26, 2020.
So have a motion, Commissioner Langford, Second Commissioner Garden, to move the May 25th, 2020 meeting to May 26th. Any more comment or discussion? All in favor, right hand, all voted for. Thank you. Item number nine, discuss and consider consolidating voting centers for the upcoming July 14th, 2020 primary runoff, take necessary action. Jennifer?
Yes, I wanted to come and talk to y'all about this pandemic going on, consolidating for the runoff. It's coming up in Ju-, in July 14th is when they rescheduled it. I would like, because of all the regulations that are going on right now with the COVID-19, I would like to consolidate to just Montague Annex. The reason being is it would be easier to monitor. I don't know how many election judges and clerks I'm going to be willing to have to work this election anyway. And this may all blow over by then, I understand that, but I have to get some things in place right now. So that's why I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention.
When did you say it's supposed to be?
July 14th is election day. Early voting starts July.
That's the runoff.
Yes.
That's just the runoff. The only thing in runoff, I think, is congressional seating.
Yes, it's just state and federal level. We don't have anything local on it. I do have numbers of previous runoffs, if y'all would like that just to go by.
Why don't you go ahead and share those?
We had 681 Republicans and 14 Democrats, and most of those were applications for ballot by mail for the runoff.
So you don't think you're going to be high competing?
I don't really. I think we're going to have a very low turnout, just because of what's going on right now.
I think part of the problem, and we talked about this Thursday, this last week, is that if we put voting locations around access to those buildings, you know, because a couple of those are churches, our schools, our municipal buildings, that they may not want us to do that, but I think it'd just be easier to plan on doing that for this one election right now, and then we can work on November after that. That's, that was her recommendation, and I have to agree with her. I think it's probably a good idea to reduce it down, especially for the judging. Locations of the voting center and the judges, most of her judges are going to be in a high-risk age group, and they're probably not going to be willing to do it, and to be able to get judges to participate in other locations are going to be tough to do. And I think she's being very proactive and smart to get this word, where she knows she can handle it. She's going to have to have extra judges other than just the check-in, just to help monitor people coming in and out so that we don't have, we have to plan on not being in violation of a distancing rule and gathering rule. So in order to help her with that, she's going to need to hire a couple of extra judges on top of the ones that are checking in and actually monitoring the elections to be able to help with spacing.
We have to go behind each voter and wipe the machines down, that's why door handles down. They're even recommending that we use a sneeze guard, what they're considering a sneeze guard is just a plexiglass shield for when people sign in. I'm in the process of having one of those made, but it's going to cost a little over $100 to have that one sneeze guard made. So that's another thing, another expense that would be limited if we had it here.
How much more would consolidate to the annex, we'll get to the annex for the runoff for the primary runoff. And this is just the runoff?
Just the runoff, yes. November will go back, hopefully go back to normal.
I don't like it to be up when you close them down, but I see it, the only count this, because I get calls when we didn't have the, whatever it was, voting in St. Joe that one time, my phone rang off the wall because you can't, because they don't have access to mostly older people that want to vote. Of course, this, like I say, this is a whole different circumstance, but.
There's still opportunity for mail-in, if you want to explain that process now.
You said that most of that was mail-in last time, was that older people mostly voting?
Well, it has been over 65 disabled or in school, college, out of the county.
So that's not what voting is doing. I see the need toward here, but to me, all we're doing is encouraging people not to vote. I agree with you.
And I would be here if it wasn't for COVID-19. I would have them all open, but I, I'm just going by recommendations.
How late can you change that, Jennifer? Can we come back in June 3rd and change it to where we have our fours?
I'll have to look and see what my notice of election deadline is. Is that something I need to get in place? And then another thing is, I need to know how many machines I need to have, you know, and I have to give them enough time to program all of that. So I'm not sure.
Thirty days, close time.
At least, yeah. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I don't have my calendar, I'm not sure what the deadline is for this.
Any other plans, or things to do?
I'm already in the process of getting that done. It's just going to be a tri-fold, it's going to have hands on it, and the front part's going to be higher than the side, yeah.
And I realize this is not a, not the most convenient time for anybody in the county period, but I think it's the most responsible thing to do for the public right now.
And another thing, you know, the distancing issue I have right now in St. Joe, I don't know how many, how many machines I'm going to be able to put in there and still be within our regulations on the six feet. They did put new plugs in over there, which I'm grateful for, because we could put more machines in now. Nokona, I'm very limited on outlets, because they just have outlets on one side, and I think there's two. The church, I don't know that we're going to be allowed to be in the church, really. I don't know. I just wanted to talk to y'all first and get your thoughts on it before I started calling around.
And again, the locations are a concern, but I think the judges are a bigger concern. Have to staff the locations. If we confirm a location, we've still got to do judges on. I think that's going to be a little more difficult, till some things kind of level out, and we get more people competent in what's going on.
I think the judge, bless the judge, you know, it's going to be a hard part. I think the judge is going to be the hardest part, because they're all older people than they don't.
Yes, all of mine are, you know, elderly. I have two young, young people. And I'm going to reach out to them first, or at least one of them first, and then reach out to some others.
I don't like it, but I like this.
Right, I, you know, and I don't like it either. I, I just, I feel like this is the best as far as us to be able to monitor the situation that we're in right now.
Say this, I know this is a different situation, but this is what we're in, even when Randy Shipp and First came in here, want to start consolidating. Now we're down to one. That's, that is not right. And that, you know, if that's what we want to do on this, I'll go along with it.
I don't like it either, but I'm going to second it, because I think that's all we need to do, just because of what's going on.
You know, that's in chief line.
But we got to get, we got to get a plan in place before then, she has to have time to get everything.
I have deadlines, and so I, I mean, that's why I'm coming to y'all now, is because, because I have deadlines, I need to know how many machines I need, I need to know how many judges I need to get, so.
We have a motion from Commissioner Garden and a second from Commissioner Mayfield. Any more discussion? I mean, that's, anybody has anything to say now? I'll study it.
It's hard to move, I mean, it's just what you can do.
My only reservation is if we can, if we could change it, June 1st or something, where we let open back up St. Joe and building up, at least have four, anyway, that's, that's just my only thing. Hopefully, we can do that, because I think it's all we want to change here for quick.
Do you have any idea how, on the length of the phases, I mean, if he's going to go phase two, then how long is phase?
He's not giving up any information.
How long is this considered to be?
So far, it hasn't been, to my knowledge. Any direction we're getting is coming through the election administrator and Secretary at State, and that's the advice that they're giving them now, is to plan for this and how to plan for it. And given the state that we're in with the executive orders that have been given, that's all we can work with is what we have at hand, and I think it's the prudent thing to do. I think it's the responsible thing to do for the citizens.
And I understand things may be, maybe open back up, you know, sometime in May and June. I just have to get some things in place right now.
And if we did open up any more locations, I think the prudent thing to do would be to secure those judges before we came to do that, make sure that we have the judges available to do it with, because it wouldn't do any good opening a location if we couldn't get judges, so.
That's, that's who you need to talk to first, you know, to see, see how many.
I agree.
Come out. You know, hopefully, this thing will get someone out of here when July 14th comes around and everybody is out of moving and they've got to come to Montague to vote, and there ain't nothing else open. People forget real easy what kind of, if the network in right now, or whatever it is. You know, like I say, I'm going along with it, but my phone will ring always does it ever. If there's something ain't open in St. Joe, my phone rings. They will, they feel like they don't get the opportunity. Is it early voting too? Is it a week long? It starts the week before, I guess, the date of July 14th.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I guess we can have a paper, you will have a paper.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it, I have it on our website now, the dates that it will be, but it will definitely be in the newspaper.
Anything else? Have a motion and a second, all in favor, right hand, all voted for. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. Item number 10, discuss and consider accepting District Attorney's Chapter 59, secure reports and take necessary action. I think Ms. Moheemis is here, in case you do come up to the table up front, and we have reports from 2017, 18, and 19. And the reports were in your packets as well. Does anybody have any questions about any reports specifically? Did you have anything you wanted to open with, just here for questions?
Yes.
Okay.
You got some money in there.
Yes, sir.
You need a motion to approve the report?
Yes, sir.
That's a formal motion.
Have a motion for Commissioner Langford, where was the second? Commissioner Murphy. Any questions for the district attorney? All in favor, right hand, all voted for. Thank you. Thank you, Kansas. Thank you for waiting. Item number 11, discuss and consider lease of the experiment farm and take necessary action. I know Commissioner Langford, you put this on the, on the agenda, and we discussed it. You put a lot of time and a lot of work into a proposal for that lease, but I think there's still some work to be done on it.
I'd ask Jennifer if she wouldn't mind explaining kind of why this, you know, fell, fell down here, if she doesn't mind, because I certainly don't really understand it myself.
For, just, because I just got a review of it, I didn't get an actual copy. I don't know if there's been a fence or a lease. A fence is an expense and a lease is revenue, and those are money together, and the lease, I mean, the bid laws are written specifically for, you could be revenue, the expenses, but we start commingling like that, we have to report those separately in our audit, we have to, I just don't think it falls in line with the bid laws as it is presented.
Well, like I say, if, if that's, I'm fine with it, you know, if that's what we need to do, but like I say, I was approached by two different people, and I got these specs from NRCS for this, it wasn't. Wasn't, anybody made it up. Wanting to build a fence through the Dozer work county wouldn't be out of opinion. This lease took it for a few years. And to me, that makes sense, but I know, you know, government and common sense doesn't mix all the things. You know, judge, I want it to no action table. I'll make the motion to do whatever with it, but I'm done with it.
I've had a chance to look at it, but you're definitely going to run with a taxation issue, doing it the way you're doing it. I mean, you don't just get a fence for free. You would still have to pay taxes on the, as if you were receiving rent, so.
Well, we.
And I think that's what Jennifer and I were starting getting money on.
We do have to pay tax. It would go back on the tax roll. We'd, you know, we'd be ag exempt, so. They've been paying $6,000 a year, probably cost a thousand for taxes on it, but that's, you know, that's money out of the county's pocket to me. You know, brand new fence missing out, but like, you know, I'm, no, I'm not fine with it, but I, you know, that's fine, you know, whatever.
I like that Bob's idea. So what's our option? We have to lease it for cash and go on or?
Well, the cleanest thing to do with it is for us to build a fence and then lease it. And go out for bids for both of those, for each of them independently, or build a fence ourselves. That's the cleanest way to do it. I think what you get into is the appearance of it right now is a quid pro quo. And I don't know how, my problem with it, and what I was asking for correction on, was how to determine value for the lease itself. Because the fence is going to take a X number of dollars to do, and I don't know how you bring those together for a single bid, for the fence and the lease.
Bids.
That's the purpose of the bid, you know.
Bid it out the fence.
Well, we have to pay for it then, you know.
We're turning around and leasing for what we got the fence.
Y'all understand y'all set up to pay taxes, right?
Yes, yes.
We have to pay taxes.
Sure, y'all just get a free fence.
Well, no, I don't understand what you're talking about there. We have.
For instance, if I do some legal work for Commissioner Garden and he comes and puts in a swimming pool in my house, that's income. That's as if he gave me money for my legal work. I get, in the real world, people trade out all the time.
So we're paying taxes on the lease anyway, right?
You would pay tax on money, yeah.
On that release. We're leasing for cash. We're paying that anyway, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if we bid it out and get a fence built, bid our fence, and then turn around and lease it out for what we got the fence for, about a year, we get our money back, we pay taxes on it. You've got somebody who won't do this, Bob, is that the deal?
No.
There's nobody.
No, I was going to bid out, let somebody come in here and go by my specs that I got from NRCS and tell me how many years they want in a lease to do this work.
Right, okay.
You know, again, I'd rather just wait until the county has the money to shell out to build fence and then turn around like we did and put it up for bids to lease the place, you know, wherever. But you're looking at $35,000 to build Dozer work and build. And we don't need, I agree, we don't need to spend that right now, but it's $6,000 an acre. It doesn't take long to get that back, or $6,000 a year doesn't take long to get it back.
Well, and that was a bid as well, and that might change.
Well, that's what, you know, that's what.
I think that's, that realizes the problem is the value of the fence, having equate that value to the fence in the number of years of the lease. And then it's considered income each year for that lease, and I, I don't, I don't know how to do that. I think it would take.
How many acres up there?
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one or something, four or something like that. I mean, it's a shame just to let it sit there. You know, we came forward to build a fence. Something else is going to lose it there.
We get $6,000 a year on you.
It's what Jackie Reeves, I believe, was paying, $6,000.
Two eighty-one point six two acres.
You know, we probably had to pay somewhere close to $1,000. He goes on the tax roll to be, you know, ag exempt. We had to pay that since we had to lease it out. Again, you know, I'm not, I'm not fine with it. Let's move on.
The lease is fine.
It's expired.
It's expired, so we're not going to lease it until we get some.
Till we figure out how to get it done.
Fences, they just ain't no fence on, especially on Woodland School Road. The highway's not bad, but Woodland School Road, you're lucky they have one more around.
Yeah, they do some, they do some.
I know it's reason we couldn't lease it again. Sure, spend a lot of time out there chasing cows.
Okay, so really there's just no action to take on that.
Motion for no action.
Anybody have anything to add or say?
I feel like if we own the land, we need to get funds so we can come up with money and fence it.
But we don't have it, and I think that's what we're getting into is.
We got, well, budget time, we can budget them, can't we?
We'll be the thin this year.
There's no sense in letting this sit there for doing nothing.
Well, you can't. I mean, this may sound like a treatment deal, but if Jessica wants to lease it for five years, but she guarantees a brand new fence and the Dozer work done.
That's what I'm trying to do right here.
But that's what I'm saying, that why, why can't you do that?
I don't think they're saying you can't, whereas I think everyone's saying you better consult tax attorneys and CPAs and.
Make sure that's right.
Make sure it doesn't violate the bidding process.
My motion still stands for no action.
I kind of want to say, I want to understand in the real world, that's what you're doing.
I much want to bid, but if I've got to go through tax attorneys and everything like that, I'm, you know, like I say, I'm not interested in that. It's, it was way too simple a deal for the county to pass. That's the problem, you know. For me it is, you know, that's fine, because what we need to do is, you know, it's not like we don't have the money for fence. We just don't really need to spend that. You know, I don't know what this future holds right here. Looking at $35,000 out of contingency to fence it for Dozer work, fence and everything, then we turn around, we get our money back, but it, you know, it'd take.
Take numbers years.
Six years.
Yeah, but still it goes back.
Why would it take eight years to lease it upfront for so much a year?
Because you can't just lease it. You've got to go out for bids for it.
Well, I know, but I mean, even when you get your bids.
Well, what I was using was the $6,000 a year for lease on it. If it brought more or something like $6,000, you know, it'd take six, six years to get your money back for it. That's what I was hoping to do here is if somebody come in, we may have to decide if it's tied, but somebody's come in and said, I'll do all that work for six years lease. That's what I didn't apply. I didn't understand what it was.
But if you lease it, you can still lease it for all six years paid up front, too. You could get all your money going back for six years. Lease for six years if you got some.
I don't know if they do it or not.
So a lot of them cow guys can't do that upfront.
I don't know.
It's hard because they can't, they can't.
I don't think anybody in here can do that contract. And like, and be sure that it's, it's a legal and just contract. I don't know how, which is the reason we're sitting here now. I had questions about it. I asked about it, and this is where we came to.
I was saying county fence is. Why don't we sell the land? Why don't we?
That's an option.
Well, I'd give that a lot of thought, but one, that I had a couple of people call me and ask me about that, what are we going to do with it? They didn't want to see us sell it right now, just to the fact that, yeah, it might bring three or four thousand acre acre out there right now, but it could make twice that. You know, it's, it's a pretty good investment for the county to have. We just need to put it to use.
Yeah, what would it bring in here?
Good, no telling.
It's already doubled.
So I, I'd be, I'd be pressed to sell it after that, but, you know, I see the point there.
You know, well, it's going to play out before then.
Let me run one thing past you, Clay. Can the highest precinct four offer to spend the money to build the fence and receive the money back when it's leased out so much a year? Do you think that, or is that the same, you know, that's building the fence upfront?
If the county builds a fence and then leases it, I think, and goes through the bidding process and all that, I think that's very clean as to which precinct spends the money. That's probably more of an accounting.
What Bob will say next, go in there equally, we all should, nobody gets.
Yeah, he just had to buy the lease money up until it's paid for. I can see that creating headache for the author and creator, but, so, again, I'm, like I say.
Well, Bob, if he wanted to do that, what big wrong with that?
Hell, I don't know that I would. You know, I'd have, I'd just have to find out some.
I understand, but if you said it's. You've got to make a lease over like two or three years. You know, if you wanted to do that, I wouldn't say a problem.
Well, I, I, I think that there's a lot of study to be done with it, a lot of study with it before we actually put anything out here to do. I mean, we want to be sure that everything is right with it. I don't think that a decision has to be made on that today. I think it's sitting, sitting dormant for a couple of months until we get to a place where we can spend the time and money to figure out what to do with it is a much more rational thing to do than just jump out there and do something right now.
But we hear those precincts going, that fence is a bit 105 degrees up.
Let me say one thing, Judge. It's, it's in precinct three to start with, and I shouldn't even be over there. And it means absolutely financially, it's not a thing in my body, and I don't want, it ain't what this is about here. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna let it sit there, all I'm trying to do is get the thing back up and use it. I don't want, you know, I ain't cutting no side deal with nobody.
Oh, I don't think, I don't think that was ever seen.
It's a good inside model. It's a long, the best one too, because it ain't gonna, it ain't gonna get cheaper than it might be for it. I don't, I don't see that happening.
That's, I think that's why it's better just to, let's do it right. Takes some time to figure out what to do with it and how to get it done right.
We get this thing to stuff over with. I'm going to have to clean up intro and stuff.
The right, the right deal is getting that $35,000 to spend on it. That's, we can't, there's no way to get around it if we can't do it the way that they planned. If we don't spend the money to do it and then we turn around, lease it out and get our money back anyway. Just got a sense made with some.
Where that lease honey been though?
Y'all sure it has?
There's a lot of, the money's for having money.
There is a lot of the lease.
So you got any money on?
That's budget. Mark, fine. The line. The budget.
There is still a vote.
That's the six thousand. The budget's $6,000.
I'll second, but I did, I still want to say, I mean.
We did have a second, didn't we?
Oh, who was the second?
Roy.
Okay, alright.
Well, yeah, I just, I don't mind, I mean, and right now money's tied in my precinct just because I think crap we're trying to do a little bit, but I don't mind doing whatever, and Bob knows that, Roy and Mike knows that, we'll, to get it back on, to use them. It's just, it's hard to land. It's set there. It'll grow up and.
It's going to weaken.
But, I mean, I don't, I'm kind of like him. I don't mind fronting the money if I get it back, as long as I get it back.
Yeah, I don't blame it just sat there and been that way.
I mean, that, you know how land just grows up and sits there. I look at 12, I don't know, I don't even know that one. We look at that, $8,000, maybe $500, $300, something like that. Well.
Well, we, you still got to know if we can even do that. It takes a little time. You'd have to find that out. That's a whole nother deal, but again, my, my vote still stands right here, but if it, if it, if it happens, somebody else can do it. I'm, you know, I'm done with this deal. Somebody else can edit it up. Shouldn't be in precinct three anyway, Mark.
Well, that's it.
I just shouldn't.
I think somebody said nothing.
Yeah, I shouldn't.
I'll just drop there on the four or three and take them all together.
I've got equipment work done right now, but again, you know, when y'all headed up, people do anything here about two times is enough for me. I've got paving season coming on, hopefully.
Well, I'll just make one comment and then we'll go with it. Again, I, I agree with y'all. Sitting dormant for eternity is not a good thing, but I think right now the thing to do is just make sure that we do it right, number one, and work through our budget process and see exactly where we're going to be. You know, before we jump out there and spend $35,000 or $40,000 on something without knowing exactly how we're going to be laying for the upcoming budget process to do. I don't, I don't think, you know, 90, 120 days is going to be a, a big deal to wait and see exactly where we're at. Jennifer, do you have something to add?
Is that what these supplies for the fence are going to cost?
I, I truly don't know.
The fence and the Dozer work, and I've figured it out with the amount that we've measured out there, it'll cost somewhere between $30,000 and $35,000 for the fence and the Dozer work.
Is that with us doing the Dozer work or somebody else?
That, that would be hiring the Dozer work done there.
Okay, but now we're talking about us doing, correct?
If, no, well, we'd have to hire the fence done and get them to build it and the fence up there.
Okay, so we're still talking about hiring for the fence. So we're still talking, because if, if we're doing it, which I thought I heard that mentioned, I may interpret that incorrectly.
I'm not interested in building the fence. I've gotten, I'm, that's, that's not an option for me, not putting out the labor to build the fence.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Take no action on this and we'll bring it up at a later date. On the paper, right hand?
All voted for.
Thank you. Item number 12, discuss, consider precinct one for permission to enter Mike Murkley property on New Hartluka Road to claim debris from under a bridge, take necessary action, Commissioner Garden.
We got those box bridges and box coves and that thing, and it's the bridge from the bottom to the top now. Got one, one box is open up out, I believe, was in there. So I need to get into the track hoe. Uh, Ryan, we're going to go, we'll make a couple of points in there. Clean it back out. Get all that debris back to the business.
Let's take into that motion.
Have a motion, Commissioner Garden, second, Commissioner Langford. Any more discussion? All in favor, right hand? All voted for. Item number 13, discuss, consider precinct three, line item, budget adjustment from gravel to part-time, take necessary action, Commissioner Murphy.
Usually I need to move $35,000 from gravel to part-time.
Okay, you have a motion, Commissioner Murphy, second, Commissioner Garden, to move $35,000 from gravel to part-time. All in, all in favor, right hand? All voted for. Thank you. Item number 14, discuss, consider opening and accept a sealed bid for 2,004 16D Caterpillar backhoe and 1998 CPS Billy Dunn, trailer in precinct four, take necessary action, Commissioner Langford.
One thing about this, if we were closed on Good Friday when the bid come in, so it didn't show up on the opening date, and to my understanding, I can't open it today. So I'm just going to take no action on that, and I'll worry about selling it later.
Okay. So only bid that we got was late, so there's no action taken on that, or late bid, second. And all in favor, right hand? All voted for. Thank you. Item number 15, discuss, consider all precincts going out for sealed bid for muscified asphalt and prime oil, take necessary action.
I put this on there also because it's getting pretty close, and I talked with them. I was, wasn't for sure about a 90 or 180 day contract. Both salesmen that I talked to said there wouldn't be enough difference to worry about between the 90 or 100. So I just like to go out for 180 day bid and will, and I'd like to open it on the fourth Monday of May. And that's when it'll start then.
That's, that's when we just moved, I think, from 25 to 26, that actually be on 26.
Okay, that'd be fine on the, on May the 26th. On May the 20, Tuesday the 26th, then open bids for asphalt. Is that a holiday month? It is.
A holiday.
Yeah.
I would put in your bid numbers is that they need to be here on Friday, prior to that Tuesday. So put your deadline for receivable bids on Friday. That way there's no confusion.
Well, I may even make it a little sooner than that because more likely, one, possibly two. Well, I may even make it a little sooner than that, because more likely, one, possibly two bids is all we'll get, and it, that far down the line, you know, fourth, fourth week of May, they can get it here a week early, if they just go to your office anyway. I don't wanna take a chance missing out on it, because then it hits, I'm gonna start trying to pave in June.
Bob is a, is all bicycle flag on this stuff.
It does, and that's reason I was calling him about the hundred and eighty or the ninety today, because, you know, oil may go up in hundred and eighty, but he said it'll vary just a little bit, but he still, he says it won't be that big a difference in, in, with going a hundred and eighty, it'll just save me coming back in ninety days and doing this again. If he had have thought, it would've made a big difference, you'd have done it, or a big difference. It's gonna reflect on it. Last year, it was two and a quarter gallon, and I, I hope it's somewhere under two dollars for sure, once, hopefully, I don't know, he didn't know either.
But that's trying to run out of hit them with.
Hell, they're not gonna, they're not gonna stretch their neck out too far on this, you know. If you done a year contract, we wouldn't get a very good deal, because they don't, nobody knows, but...
Okay, have a motion for all precincts to go out for sealed bid for multi-fide asphalt and prime oil, and second. Okay, second, Commissioner Garden. All in favor, right hand? All voted for. Thank you. That being the last item on the agenda, and change motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All in favor, right hand? All voted for. Thank you, everybody. This, it's, uh, been joining us, the video conference, thank, uh, but we were adjourned. Thank you.
Mark, Mark, don't run off, I need you.
Anything you're saying.
I don't think so. I will next time, not this one.